Okay, Chair Ali Sullivan, we're ready. Can you hear me on this? Hello? Oh, three.
Recording in progress.
There we go. Why don't we go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Monacconci, would you mind taking roll call, please?
Commissioner Stevens?
Present.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Present.
Commissioner Lo?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Present.
Commissioner Vanilla Jr.? Absent. Commissioner Garg? Absent. And Chair Ali Sullivan.
Present. Just for clarification, do we have members online? I've been hearing that we do and that we don't, and I heard someone call out roll call, so can we get clarity on that?
Commissioner Patterson has joined online.
Okay.
And we're verifying, just Commissioner Patterson is the only commissioner online. Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Commissioner Patterson, thanks for joining. We'll make sure not to forget that your hand might be raised behind our heads, so thank you for that. Why don't we go ahead and start with public comment? The public comment section provides an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda. The Planning Commission welcomes comments and requests that speakers present their remarks in a respectful manner. Speakers wishing to address the Planning Commission should limit their comments to three minutes. It does not appear that there are any folks joining us in chambers, and so I would ask Ms. Monacconci if we have any members of the public raising their hand to speak at public comment.
Chair, we do not have any attendees joining through the Zoom platform.
All right. Seeing no comments, we will go ahead and close public comment, and we will go on to our first item of business for the evening. We'll start with item number one. Just pulling up the exact title, the proposed development of 14 residential condominium units and one commercial condominium unit on a .47 acre site located at 32513 Mission Boulevard. Believe we have a staff presentation on this, so I will turn it over to Planning Commission or Planning Department staff.
Hello, everyone. Let me just share my screen. Does everyone see my presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. For those who don't know me, I am Taylor Rashard, Assistant Planner. Tonight, we will be reviewing an application for the subdivision of a mixed-use building at 32513 Mission Boulevard. This vesting tentative tract map for condominium purposes will allow each of the units within the mixed-use building to be sold and owned individually. I'd like to start by providing some relevant background on the project. On February 7th of 2019, the applicant submitted a site plan review application to construct a mixed-use building on the project's site. On September 1st of 2021, the Planning Director ministerially and conditionally approved the site plan review application. Nearly a year later, the applicant submitted this vesting tentative tract map application to subdivide the previously approved project. The current application proposes no changes to the project's previously approved design. However, it does propose changes to the tenure and the affordable housing commitments, as this requirement differs for rental versus ownership projects. On the next couple of slides, I will be providing details about the project's site and design. Only as context, it is important to note that the site and the design features were previously approved as part of the site plan review application and therefore are not currently under review. Tonight, the commission will only be taking action on the vesting tentative tract map for condominium purposes. The project's site is 32513 Mission Boulevard, which is located on the southern extent of Mission Boulevard near the Hayward and Union City jurisdictional boundary. Specifically, it is located between Lexington and Lafayette Avenue. To the northwest, across Lexington Avenue, there is a dentist office. To the northeast, across Mission Boulevard, the chapel of the Chimes Cemetery is located. And to the south and the west of the project's site, there is a mix of residential developments, including fourplexes, single-family homes, and a 57-unit apartment building. The site consists of two parcels that will be merged that total approximately 0.47 acres. This corner lot contains a vacant, approximately 1,300-square-foot restaurant building, which will be demolished to allow for the construction of the new development. The site is zoned neighborhood commercial, which allows a variety of commercial uses as well as residential uses above ground floor commercial. The Hayward 2040 general plan land use designation is commercial high-density residential, which allows for mixed-use and multifamily residential developments. This land use designation allows a maximum density of 34.8 dwelling units per acre. The mixed-use development's density is 28.8 units per acre, thus complying with the allowed uses and density outlined in the general plan. As shown in these elevations, the project includes a three-story mixed-use building with 14 residential units above a ground-floor parking garage and an 853-square-foot commercial tenant space. The residential units include two studio units, eight two-bedroom units, and four three-bedroom units that range from 830 to 2,992 square feet. There are two common outdoor open spaces, which are located in the front of the building along Mission Boulevard and on a roof deck above the tenant space. Vehicular access to the site is provided by two driveway connections along Mission Boulevard and Lexington Avenue. The connection along Mission Boulevard is existing and will provide access to the five commercial tenant parking spaces. The connection along Lexington Avenue will provide residents access to the parking garage, which has 26 parking spaces and five bike parking spaces. That includes the overview of the site plan review application. So, the proposed vesting tentative tract map for condominium purposes will allow the sale of each of the units individually. The proposed subdivision features a single parcel where each condominium owner owns the airspace within their individual unit and an equal share of the common areas and improvements within the development, which will be maintained by a homeowners' association. To construct and subdivide this mixed-use development, the developer is obligated to do each of the following items on the screen. The developer needs to comply with the city's reach code by ensuring the units be all-electric and providing parking spaces that are electric-vehicle-ready. The developer needs to comply with the Affordable Housing Ordinance. As previously noted, the Affordable Housing Ordinance requirements are different for ownership versus rental projects. If the applicant elects to provide onsite units, a minimum of 10% of the units for ownership projects shall be for sale to moderate-income households compared to the 6% of units for rental projects that shall be rented to low or very-low-income households. Because of these differences, the applicant had to modify their affordable housing plan for this application. They will be providing one moderate-income unit onsite and paying a fractional fee for the remaining .4. The one onsite affordable unit is a two-bedroom, 2,608-square-foot unit located near the common open space on the roof deck. And finally, the developer shall comply with the property developers' obligation for Parks and Recreation Ordinance through the payment of a $153,066 park impact fee. Please note, there is a typo within the staff report, and the correct fee amount is $153,066. As noted earlier, the project complies with the uses and the densities allowed in the general plan. Additionally, the project addresses the following policies outlined in the general plan. Land use policy 1.1, the city shall encourage property owners to revitalize or redevelop abandoned, obsolete, or underutilized properties to accommodate growth. Housing policy 3.1, the city shall implement land use policies that allow for a range of residential developments in housing types, prices, ownerships, and size, including low-density single-family uses, moderate-density townhomes, and a high-density apartments, condominiums, TODs, live-work units, and units in mixed-use developments. And housing policy 3.4, the city shall encourage development of residential uses close to employment, recreational facilities, schools, neighborhood commercial areas, and transit routes. That concludes my presentation on the proposed vesting tentative tract map for condominium purposes at 32513 Mission Boulevard. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission approve the proposed vesting tentative tract map based on the draft findings and subject to the recommended conditions of approval provided within the agenda packet. At this time, I would like to introduce Kamran and Murthy from the applicant team who are participating via Zoom this evening. Myself and they are ready to answer any questions you may have.
Wonderful. Is the applicant interested and/or prepared to provide any comment this evening? Proactively?
I don't believe they want to provide any comment, but I'm excited to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Appreciate the concise report from staff. We'll open it up to Commissioner questions. Do we have any hands raised on the Zoom platform? Commissioner Patterson? No? All right. Seeing no questions from commissioners, I will take the chair's prerogative here and ask a question of the applicant. The project looks great, understanding that we're not discussing the merits of the project itself. I am curious, though, if the applicant could perhaps give a little bit of context as to why the change. I'm assuming it's a change from rental to for-sale condominium units. What's led to that change?
So, we want to give an opportunity to everyone that in the Bay Area to be an owner of their own houses. Knowing the shortage of the houses that we have in the Bay Area, we want to give it for the price that everybody can afford for a reasonable price, as well as with the convenience of getting into the bar and all that. So, giving it in apartments doesn't make them as an owner, but giving it for an affordable price and gives them to be an owner, as well as gives us the satisfaction and why we have started this project for. Because there was multiple times that we have came for the city telling that one of my brother, who passed away a couple of years back, he started this project to give it for an affordable price for the people who are hardworking in the Bay Area. And that's how we started, and that's how we envision doing this going forward.
Wonderful, that makes sense. Any difference in any of the construction or amenities as the units are going from rental to for-sale?
No. There's not going to be any change.
Perfect, all right. And then the last question I have, one of my concerns that I've noted before is projects that are approved and then never move. I'm curious if the applicant is prepared to how prepared they are to start on construction.
So, we're just waiting for approval. As soon as we get it, we are right on to get this going. There wouldn't be any delay from the builder's side to get this going. That's how much committed we are.
And I'll add to that, the applicant team, because this was previously approved as a site plan review application, is already applied and is currently in the process of obtaining their building permits and their grading permits.
Great. That's it for me from questions. I'll look once more if any of my fellow commissioners have questions. Seeing none, why don't we go ahead and open it up to public comment? Again, seeing as there are no participants in the chambers, Ms. Monacconci, is there anyone online raising their hand for public comment?
No, there's nobody online. I'm sorry.
So quiet tonight, all right. Seeing no public comment, we'll go ahead and close public comment on this first item. I'll finish off here if there are any comments from the planning commissioners. All right. Looks like this is gonna be a quick one. Why don't we go ahead and make a call for Commissioner Stevens? Yeah?
I would be prepared to make a motion to approve this vesting tentative map, but I'd just like to make one comment before I do so. And I realize that this is not the forum for this particular, because I realize that the site plan and architectural plan was previously approved. But I just would like to make a note that this is a ministerial approval of a major site development. It's a major building. It's a major portion of Mission Boulevard. I do not believe that these should be ministerial approvals, especially given the state's acquisition and control of our design process and our review process. I really think that the refinement of standards that can really curtail how these projects look and how they're built is really important. I think this is just another good example of it. And I take this from the plan, the elevation plan, which was approved, that notes that it's going to use corrugated metal siding with accent color. And when I thought about corrugated metal with accent color, I think of industrial, and I realize the rendering doesn't take that form. But I'm just curious about how ministerial approvals take the architectural character of the corridor into consideration. So, thank you, but I'm prepared to move this item.
Second.
Great. Before we take a call for vote, Commissioner Stevens, appreciate your comment there. I myself was also curious as to why I didn't remember this project and then realized that it never came to the Planning Commission. For clarity, would staff be able to explain what the threshold is and why this did not come to the Planning Commission?
Well, first of all, the UNI code, which includes a lot of allowances for administrative review and approval of projects, gets applied if a project satisfies all of the objective design criteria, which this one did. It's not requesting any variances or anything that would necessitate it coming or rising to a higher level of discretion. Architecture is not one of those criteria. We don't, you know, if we've had definitive design features or architectural standards that were adopted by the city where the applicant was not meeting those, then we absolutely would be forwarding those to the commission. But similar to many other projects, which the authority has been enshrined to planning staff and the planning director to make these determinations, because they do satisfy the city zoning development standards and the general plan, that authority has been granted to staff. There is, as with any discretionary approval, however, there is an appeal period. And so during those appeal periods, if it had been called up by a member of the council or had been appealed, that project would be coming before the commission. But that is, that higher level of discretion is not automatically applied on projects that otherwise meet our adopted criteria.
And Jeremy, I believe, just for clarity here, I've asked on this in the past, but appreciate clarity. Planning Commission staff are not able to request an item be brought to the Planning Commission. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Stevens, I certainly hear your comments there. So, thank you for that. It looks like we have a motion and a second one. We go ahead and call for a vote, please?
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Aye.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Chair Ali Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ray Vanilla? Commissioner, or absent Commissioner Garg, absent.
All right, looks like it has moved. All right, item number two. This is a work session item, so we are going to be in discussion. We're not going to be taking a vote on this. So, the second item is the General Plan Annual Progress Report for 2023, and this is just for the Planning Commission to accept. So, I'll go ahead and shift again to planning staff, and Jeremy, are you going to present this one?
Mira Han, who's our Associate Planner, will be making that presentation.
Great.
Yes. All right, can you guys hear me and can you see my screen?
So, I'm really sorry, Taylor and Commissioner. My name is Uday Sistam. I just have a question about 32513. Do we need to be on the call, or are we done with our project and we can drop off?
Your project has been approved, yeah. So, you can go ahead and
Thank you so much, and I would like to thank everyone for all the support.
Wonderful, thank you. Sorry about that. All right, why don't we go ahead and start the presentation? We can see the screen, and I believe we can hear you as well.
Wonderful. All right, well, good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public. I don't know if we have a lot of people from the public tonight. My name is Mira Han, and I'm Associate and Associate Planner here in the city. I joined the city in July of 2021, and since then, I've had the opportunity to meet some of you. And for those of you who I'm meeting for the first time, so nice to meet you, even virtually. So, I look forward to working with the planning commission in the future. So, okay, so tonight, we will be presenting you with the General Plan Annual Report, which is a status update on the city's implementation of the general plan. So, just like in previous years, staff has reached out to various city departments. As they end, they have provided us with the progress updates on these programs. We have compiled these to you here to show the results, and you have received those in the staff report and also Attachment 2, which is part of your packet. And that Attachment 2 includes the full list of program updates and notes for the year of 2022. All right, so let's get started. So, yes, this presentation is part of a state requirement by the California Government Code for cities to provide a report on an annual basis and reflect progress on the general plan implementation. So, after tonight's presentation to you, to the planning commission, we will take this to city council next month. And upon council's acceptance of the report, we will forward it to the State Office of Planning and Research and the State Housing and Community Development Office. As mentioned on the previous slide, the General Plan Annual Progress Report was prepared by the Development Services Department, Planning Division, of which I'm part of, in collaboration and input from other divisions, as I said, including, as you can see here, Public Works and Utilities, Fire, Police, Library Services, Housing Maintenance Services, and the City Manager's Office. So, the purpose of this agenda, as the chair was saying, is largely meant to be informational. No action is required from the planning commission tonight. However, we will take questions and comments from the commissioners after the presentation and, of course, answer them to the best of our ability. And if we can, so we will convey these to the respective departments and divisions for further information. As I mentioned previously, this progress report will go to city council on March 28th, and of course, those comments provided tonight will be incorporated in the staff-reported presentation given to city council in a month. So, as many of you may already know, the city of Hayward's current general plan, which is Hayward 2040, was adopted in July 2014, okay? And it is our latest update. It is a long-range comprehensive plan that controls and regulates land uses and development in the city through the year of 2024 and establishes a community-based vision to guide the future development of Hayward. It includes a series of goals, policies, and implementation programs designed to achieve the plan's vision. As you may already know, it was the result of a nearly two-year community outreach process to establish this community-based vision. The general plan contains a total of 143 implementation programs covering the plan's 10 elements or topics. So, you can see here a list of what these individual elements are. And the purpose is, of course, as I said, to guide the future development of the city. All right, so the elements are listed here: land use, mobility, community safety, economic development, education and lifelong learning, hazards, natural resources, housing, health and quality of life, and public facilities and services. So, the general plan program priorities. So, yes, the 143 implementation programs of the general plan were slated in two timeframes: near term and long term. So, the near term, which is short and near term, right, covered an estimated time from the date when the plan was adopted in 2014, and then it went through to midterm up until the year of 2019. Out of these short and midterm programs, 59 were identified as annual or ongoing, which means that they are expected to be implemented throughout the life of the general plan. In 48, were identified as a one-time program, okay? When grouped together, they show a total of, of course, 107 programs. And then, on the other hand, the long term, right? The long-term timeframe, which goes from 2020 to 2040, includes 31 programs that were identified as one-time and five as an annual or ongoing program, for a total of 136. Okay, so examples of a one-time program include, as you can see on the slide, programs such as the downtown specific plan, the traffic impact fee, the complete streets assessment, the crime prevention through environmental design checklist. So, as you can see, these are pretty much like very specific, punctual projects or plans that, you know, you work through them, and then once they're done, they're complete. It's just one time. And some of the annual ongoing programs are the general and plan annual reporting, which is what we're doing tonight, the Economic Development Strategic Plan Annual Report, for example, grant funding efforts, right? Those are always ongoing, the capital improvement program, and something as like the town gown economic strategic plan in annual report, et cetera. So, for those of you who are not familiar with the town gown economic program, it is a college connection program run by the Economic Development Department in collaboration with California State University and Chevall College Associations mainly. So, of course, you can find information. I'm just listing a few here, but you can find information about each of these programs and more in Attachment 2 of your packet. Okay, so this chart has a lot of numbers, looks intimidating, so I'll break it down for you. All these numbers in this summary chart show the progress that the city has made in this past year, 2022. So the chart, as you can see, is organized by timeframe here. So we have the short and midterm and the more long term timeframes, and also organized by status, complete, in progress, not start. Okay. So as shown in the bottom row for total, we can see that the city successfully completed 35 of the general plan implementation programs, which is seven programs more from the year prior. So that's good progress. And has initiated or is currently working on 68 programs or more, sorry. And this indicates that almost three fourths of the implementation programs, the whole list are either complete or in progress. So out of the programs that were identified for initiation during the 2014 through 2019 timeframe, you we see that 28% are fully complete, 54% are in progress, and 18% have not yet been started. So we have received input from various departments and divisions, which indicates that programs that have not been yet started and have been delayed for various reasons, obviously, including funding availability, lack of resources and staff, shifting city priorities, and of course, we're still recovering from the effects of the pandemic and of course, as the whole, the rest of the world. So, you know, that's part of the reason why. Also, for the 2040, 2020 to 2040 timeframe, which is the long range, we can see that 14% are fully complete, 28% are in progress, and 58% have not yet been started. So programs slated for initiation in this timeframe, which is more long term, will begin as they are prioritized by the appropriate department or departments and of course, as staff and financial resources become available. But despite this, I think that seeing that this is a 25 year plan, right, looking out to the year 2040, it looks like the city is really making good progress in a relatively short timeframe. Okay, so this pretty much provides a visual of what we just saw, all those numbers. It's a visual representation of that. So the one on the left shows the progress the city made on the programs identified for the short and midterm timeframes. Whereas the one on the right, it's the long term timeframe. So I'll let you contemplate these beautiful pie charts. And then we'll move forward. Okay. All right, so, okay, so when I was preparing this presentation, I kept thinking to myself, okay, as we progress on completing more programs, we may need two slides for this because this year it was really a challenge to fit all these programs we actually have. So what this shows is completed programs in the short time in the short term timeframe. So we have 30. We have 30 this year so far. And so, yeah, I've listed them here. So of course, you know, some of these programs have taken more time and resources than others to be completed due to their nature, scope, or complexity, et cetera. So for example, this list includes things like the adoption of the downtown city specific plan, which was a more staffing community outreach intensive program by, you know, by nature, as well as the, for example, the multimodal level of service or LOS, design standards and service guidelines. So, for example, the multimodal design standards were adopted in 2020. And these are consistent with the ones that were adopted by the Alameda County Transportation Commission. And the purpose is to help determine the implementation of non vehicular transportation and transit improvements. Also, the city adopted new local transportation impact assessment guidelines to require local level of service analysis. So these are just examples. I'm just giving you kind of like a snapshot of some of these very cool programs. The development, another one that I think would be interesting to highlight is the development and adoption of water conservation standards within the municipal code for households, businesses, industries, and public infrastructure. The adoption of a downtown parking management plan, which I think is here, which includes enforcement policies and remedies for merchants and residents who live in downtown. A part next study to update the city's park dedication fees and requirements. So overall, this shows that good progress has been made in this particular timeframe. So in addition to these completed programs, there are also 58 programs identified for the short and midterm timeframe that are currently underway. Most of these are ongoing or annual programs. So they are in progress rather than complete by nature. They're always going to be in progress, right, because because of their nature. So some key programs underway include, as you can see, the continuation of the homeless services partnership program, which is a coordinated effort between the city and various nonprofits to provide services and ensure that homelessness and hunger needs are met in Hayward. Working with a consultant to develop a micro mobility plan, for example, to provide recommendations for bike share and scooter share services, which will help advance the private transportation companies program. So there's a program named like that. Continuing also to partner with affordable housing developers to facilitate new construction, acquisition, rehabilitation, preservation of affordable rental and homeownership developments. It should be noted that the city also provides gap back financing and assistance for developers with applications for state and federal funding. So another one, for example, would be working on updates to the climate action plan, safety element, and adoption of a new environmental justice element for the general plan in early 2023, consistent with recent state legislation. And finally, for example, expanding the cradle to career support services through a collaboration between the library, Hayward Unified School District, California State Universities Bay, and other private and nonprofit partners. So again, for those of you who look at this word like cradle to career, what does it mean? I thought it would be cool to highlight that it's a successful, ongoing program that expanded considerably due to shelter in place to support K through 12 learning, adult literacy, and other services for the public. So one example is, for example, after, you know, throughout COVID-19, virtual math review circles and reading circles were implemented for students seeking tutoring services after school. So those are really some of the benefits from the pandemic thing, but I think it's a really good program. So anyway, moving forward, programs have yet started in this short term timeframe, right? So again, a lot of these have not been started due to limited fiscal or staff resources or competing city priorities. Some of these programs are shown here. So for example, the comprehensive update updates to the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, design guidelines, and off street parking regulations. However, it should be not mentioned, I think, that in 2022, the city updated the density bonus ordinance to comply with recent state legislation and is working on the adoption of residential objective standards, which my colleagues Elizabeth Blanton and Taylor Richard already presented to you in a previous meeting, and which include updates to the city's zoning ordinance and the off street parking regulations response to recently adopted state legislation. Staff anticipates this project will be completed by the end of 2023. Another one is the complete neighborhood strategy, which involves community outreach, you know, efforts to identify various types of complementary and supporting uses that are needed in each local Hayward neighborhood. This is interesting. Although this program has not started in this format due to limited staffing resources, the city manager's office conducted in 2021 12 city hall to you meetings to conduct community outreach. And so feedback collected there was shared with departments. So also the planning division recently completed a comprehensive update to the contact list of public stakeholders, neighborhoods, and HOAs to further for public outreach for the residential objective standard. So it's been implemented in other small efforts, even though it's not in this same format, right? So additionally, staff anticipates several of these programs should begin soon, pending sufficient staff on resources. Some of these include updates to the subdivision ordinance, as I said, development of the of an urban forest management plan, grading ordinance, habitat conservation plan, et cetera. Right. Reprioritize program. So yeah, this is interesting. So however, there have been some programs that based on revised priorities and council direction were initiated earlier than their stated timeframe in the general plan. So these include the programs you see on your screen, which include, for example, the city building audits and reports. So for example, right now, staff is working with a firm specializing in energy efficiency to audit several city facilities. Assessment is expected to be completed in the second quarter of this year. Another one is traffic calming measures. So this was another one that was slated to start like later, like 2020, 2040, but it started earlier. Neighborhood traffic calming policy was adopted by city council in 2018, which identifies a process by which traffic calming complaints are addressed and also has a very robust toolbox, which staff can utilize to address these complaints. Recycled water service facilities. Again, another one of the 2020, 2040 program programs. It involves the construction of recycled water tank, pump station, treatment facility. And construction was completed in 2020 and customer deliveries began in 2022. Another one, gosh, I don't know if I should go over all of these, a lot of, because I don't want to extend myself. I could go over forever because these ones are very interesting, but you will see details on these on your staff report and on attachment two. Okay, so I'm just going to move forward.
That's fine. Yep.
What's that?
I said that's fine to go ahead and move forward.
Yes. All right. And finally, don't worry, I'm not going to list all of these. Finally, looking into this year and beyond, the following list of programs were identified as priorities or are currently in progress this year. So for example, the climate action plan, new environmental justice element. Another highlight is a historic preservation resource center. You know, planning division is compiling resources to share online and through handouts with people to bring give resources and incentives to encourage historic preservation in the city. Maybe another one that would be cool to mention is like programs that were delayed due to the pandemic now have become revitalized again, like the library received funding for its strategic plan, which is expected to be completed by the end of the by the end of 2023. Okay. And this is the last section of the presentation. Okay, so this is something that was not really part of this report, but following council feedback in 2021, staff reviewed the complete list of general plan programs and so which ones were correlated somehow or could be identified or tied into programs or projects that are also included as part of the city's strategic roadmap. Okay, so we have the general plan and the strategic roadmap. And so we try to do like that correlation. And these are shown in attachment two, the last column with an asterisk and identifies the specific project in the in the strategic roadmap that this program would be tied to. Okay, so if you feel like you really want to study it further, you can look into that. But you can see here that after we looked into that, into all these like links, we saw that 57% of general plan programs were aligned with strategic roadmap projects. So we have staff identified 82 programs that align. So that's 50%. Out of these 82 programs, 21, which is for more than last year, are complete, 42 are in progress, and 19 have not yet started. And so, okay, I'm not going to go into like this into detail. Don't worry about it. But this light shows it's just an example of some of the programs in the general plan that are also identified in the strategic roadmap. So one example is the city housing element, which was recently presented to planning commission and city council by Principal Planner Leah Schmidt. It is, for example, aligned with the strategic roadmap project, preserve, protect, and produce housing for all, item nine, and so on and so forth. So there's a really cool correlation between the general plan and the strategic roadmap. All right. And so, yeah, next steps. So the general plan will come to city council on March 21st. And after that, following city council review and acceptance, we will forward it to the state. And we will also staff will update the website to reflect, you know, the plans, the updates on the general plan. Also, on an annual basis, staff will continue providing this type of updates to planning commission and city council. May or may not be me again, I don't know. I love doing it, so I don't mind coming back. Over the next few years, of course, staff from various departments will continue to take the lead in continuing the implementation of these various programs. And let's see. Yeah, and so that concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for following along. Then before we open up for questions, I would like to reiterate respectfully that this report is just a compilation of updates. I'm not an expert in any of these, but we're happy to respond questions to, you know, to questions tonight and also taking questions that we can forward to the to departments. Yeah, and with that, I will turn it over to the commission for questions or comments. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Han, and appreciate that you're not versed on all 143 of these projects, so we'll eliminate questions just to the annual report. I will open it up now, since this is a discussion item for both questions and comments from fellow commissioners. Commissioner Patterson, any chance you have your hand up?
I do.
Oh, wonderful. There you go.
So this was a lot. I just wanted to appreciate staff not only for putting this together, but all the departments in the city that have been working on all of these. Because it was quite an interesting read and it was like, wow. So just wanted to say that. I just had a couple of questions that came up just during the the presentation. So when you mentioned that staff and fiscal resources were a couple of the reasons why some of the the 2014 to 19 projects haven't been completed yet or started, do we anticipate any changes in that over the coming years that are going to help move those projects forward? So I just wondering about that.
So I can take my own stab, I guess, from having done this twice already, two years in a row. So in collecting this this information from different divisions, what I've noticed and I've learned interacting with different department heads is that their intention is there and they are actively looking for resources and staff to further these programs, which are super important to the mission of each division and department. So I I can see the passion and the and the interest, right, from department heads and from staff to continue doing this. Now, in terms, more specific answers in terms of what kind of funding is available? Are we thinking about hiring more people? I don't have that information. Perhaps, I don't know, Jeremy, if you want to jump in. But yeah, that's my take from, I'm I hope that this helps answer your question, at least partially, but that's that's my take from having done this twice in a in a row.
Thank you. I'll move on to my next question, but thank you. That was helpful. So other than the updates that you provide annually and the submission that you said will go to the state after council also has a chance to look at this, are there any other implications for the short term or the near term programs that are not started and complete? Like, is there any actual like update to the plan that has to actually be made or is it more just of a reporting of progress that will continue to happen?
My understanding is that this is just an annual report that we're providing. And then the the general plan, I know that once in a while there are amendments to the general plan. And but I don't believe that this is part of what we're doing annually, you know, reporting back to you guys. But yeah, and of course, you know, the lifetime of this general plan, of this version will go out until 2040, and that's when, of course, a new general plan will come into place.
I'm happy to also kind of chime in if I can and just say that the the general plan, you know, when it was adopted in 2014, reflected the community goals at that time. They were also intended to really forecast out the complete build out of the community and kind of the overarching goals of Hayward through the year 2040. But things change, obviously. In 2014, when we adopted this, we weren't dealing with the same kind of housing crisis or the environmental crisis that I think a lot of people are seeing today. And so some of those things, when we're talking about shifting priorities, they may still be relevant or they may have been relevant at the time, but but they may just not be as risen to the high priority. And so that's why you see some of the things that were originally, some of the programs originally envisioned to be implemented between the 2020 and 2040 timeframe get expedited and getting, and obviously, you know, a lot of these programs require not only staff resources, but fiscal resources. And a lot of that additional financing comes from outside funding, like grant monies that would come from the state or the feds. And so a lot of that, a lot of the program implementation really does, in fact, rely on that as well. So just kind of to cap on what what Mira had had pointed out.
Thank you. Since I'm new to all of this, I'm just learning how it works. I appreciate the clarification. And then my last question was just a Um, and then my last question was just about um the connection that you looked at about the um the programs that were found to be aligned to the strategic roadmap projects. Is there any um consideration that you've given about like reprioritizing things based on whether they're aligned, or is it more just kind of informational?
Uh, I can jump in. Um, so the council is uh about ready, the newly elected council is about ready to uh meet, I think they have a uh a discussion scheduled uh next month to talk about uh new strategic priorities, and certainly um a lot of these uh programs that are listed in the general plan, many of those came out of uh the goal to uh have these uh become uh more of a higher priority. Um, and so a lot of these general plan goals and action items that have yet to be realized um are something that the council uh could consider, but they also will be reviewing the same list um in a, in a couple uh weeks. Uh, and so they will also have the opportunity um that if there was one of these action items or one of these programs listed in the general plan, if they wanted to include that um in the near term as a priority for the strategic roadmap, they certainly could could do that.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Patterson. Any other uh commissioner questions or comments from the dais here? Commissioner Goodbody?
Thank you. I want to um appreciate staff for writing and updating us on this um very um thorough and uh complete update. I have a question that may not, I don't think is included on here, but just maybe somewhere else in the general plan. Um, I'm concerned, or I'm I'm just wondering, um, in terms of like the telecommunications system, um, do is our, like, fire and police, are they on a different, like, a broadband or some sort of separate fiber from the other communication systems that just for residential, that residents use?
I'm gonna have to get back to you on that. I don't, um, you know, we, we're kind of the messenger here when it comes to collaborating all of these, and I'm not quite sure the mechanism of communication for the fire department, uh, but certainly, we can respond back and report that out.
Thank you.
All right, um. Jeremy, just for clarification on work sessions, do we have public comment?
I'm sorry, say that again.
For work session items, do we open up public comment?
You can, yes.
We can, okay, great. Um, I have a feeling I might know the answer to this, but um uh, Ms. Madakontra, Ms. Paras, do we have anyone uh online that has raised a hand for public comment?
We currently do not have no Zoom attendees.
Okay, so I won't open public comment uh in that case. Um, well, just wanted to thank um staff for the comprehensive report. Uh, I think my general take of this is um and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hahn, but uh the sort of the the so what of this is that uh we are progressing along um at a a positive rate, and it looks like we are um tracking to cover all of the projects um that we've identified in the general plan. So I think my takeaway is that um that this is a good annual update. Um, is that fair and concise, Jeremy?
Uh, I think it's pretty fair. I think you can see we're making some really good progress, and especially because if you look at the totality of the number of programs that were in there, a hundred and forty-three, and where we are currently with either completing a lot of them, um, you know, we, that was a, that was a twenty-year document, and we are, we are less than ten years into it, and we've already completed a good number of those um in that very short period of time, since since twenty-fourteen. So I think we're doing very well, um, and we will continue to make progress and report back that progress on an annual basis to the commission and to the council.
Great. Well, if you finish them ahead of time, I'm sure uh some folks will find more work for you, so. Um, all right, well, seeing uh no more comments from uh the commission uh commissioners on uh the dais here, we'll go ahead and close the um work session um with acceptance by um the planning commission. So thank you, um, staff for that report. Uh, we are blazing along tonight. We'll go ahead and move on to item number three, which is approval of minutes um of the planning commission meeting on January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
I moved that we approved the minutes.
Second.
Perfect. Uh, let's go ahead and call for a ro- uh vote, please.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanilla Junior, absent. Commissioner Garg, absent. Chair Ali Sullivan.
Uh, aye. All right, so moved. Um, perfect. Why don't we go ahead now and move on to um commission reports? We'll start um with uh Jeremy before we go to commissioner announcements.
Yeah, good evening, commissioners. Hope everybody uh had a uh wonderful uh President's Day weekend uh last Monday. Um, a couple of quick report outs, just a friendly reminder, if any of you are interested in participating in the League of California Cities Planning Commissioner Academy, uh which is uh the end part of March, please let me know. Um, it is gonna be held in Orange County, um, and I don't think, unlike last year, that they will be offering a remote option. So um, if you do have interest in that, I think I sent an email to all of you about that. Please let me know. Um, relatively soon, I'll I'll put tomorrow as the as the deadline, if you have interest. Um, in addition, I just wanted to serve as a friendly reminder. Uh, I know we have been in consultation with all of the commissioners and all of our committees uh throughout uh Hayward, but just uh just as a friendly reminder about the updating, updated meeting requirements pursuant to AB twenty-four forty-nine, which goes into effect March first. Um, obviously, that changes how we are able to conduct business, whether in person or remote. Um, so if you have any questions, please reach out to me directly, or you can reach out to uh the city clerk's office, and they'll be happy to provide some additional guidance. Um, and then the last item is that currently, we do not have anything scheduled for the March ninth planning commission meeting, which is the next meeting that we have on our agenda. Um, and unless there is a a last-minute uh non-action item, because those legal notices would have been published uh would have been due yet uh Tuesday of this week. Um, unless there's a last-minute non-action item scheduled, the meeting is likely to be canceled. And so I just wanted to put that on your radar in case you're thinking about scheduling something else. We will formally issue that cancellation notice um next week. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Uh, Jeremy, one quick um point of clarification as well, um, and we can take this offline if necessary, but the um change in remote options starting on the first, I assume that that does not apply to public, correct? The public can still interact virtually?
Great question. That is correct. So the we, the the planning commission, as well as the city council, will continue to offer hybrid meetings. So any members of the public that would like to continue to participate remotely have the comfort to do so. Uh, we will continue to offer uh those meeting links, so people can uh participate via Zoom. Um, and they can, uh, certainly, if they want to uh provide comments or attend remotely, they can do that. It it does change, however, for for the commission.
I missed some of our regulars tonight, so, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, um, why don't we go ahead and move on to commissioner announcements? Doesn't appear to be any, um, so I will just make uh two quick announcements. Um, first one, I wanted to um thank my fellow uh planning commissioners. This is my first meeting uh serving as officially as chair um in person, and so I appreciate the uh the vote of confidence and trust you placed in me to be your chair over the coming years. So thank you all very much for that. And I also wanted to take the opportunity to uh welcome um my three new uh fellow planning commissioners, Commissioner Garg, Commissioner Patterson, and Commissioner Goodbody. Uh, appreciate um having the three of you now joining, uh having a full body here with us uh going forward, and look forward to working with the three of you as well as uh my existing colleagues. So um with that, seeing no further announcements, I will do my favorite part of the night and call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Recording stopped.